Good evening and welcome to the Abbotton Board of Selectmen meeting last fifth, 2014. The county's team, please join us as we are flagging. Flagging the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a special meeting of the Abbotton Board of Selectmen regarding appointment to the Abbotton Directors of South Shore Tri-Town Development. We had posted it, moved it on shore, we tried to go by the charter and didn't feel that we'd given enough. We hadn't had a public meeting before, so we allowed the process to go until last Friday to receive any more applications and tonight we have the candidates here in the podium. We have Mr. Chris Iello, Mr. Joseph Shay, and Robert Toomey also applied but wasn't able to be here tonight. And what the format I would like to use if the members or the committees have any questions, would allow for an opening save in approximately two or three minutes. And then there's a series of questions that I believe you gentlemen have received a copy of. And those questions are a summary of questions from members of the Board of Selectmen. We received a series of questions and I asked the town manager to see, some of them were redundant, so again, I don't, is there any problems with the way Rick handled this? After the things, I would read these questions to each candidate and you could reply accordingly. So if there's no questions from the board on the process, all set? Okay. At this time, I'd ask Chris Iello from 11 Huntspon Road. Chris?
You might want to put a microphone over there, Mike.
No, I don't think we should let him use a microphone. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. I am Chris Iello. I live at 11 Huntspon Lane. And as some of you may know, I have been involved with Abbotton's government in various capacities over the last 10 years. I was a member of the Finance Committee, I was a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I am currently your delegate to the Old Colony Planning Council and one of your three water commissioners. Over the years on various boards, I have taken several votes pertaining to the development at Southfield. As your Water Commissioner, I have been active in trying to secure permanent water supply for the second phase of construction at Southfield. I have read Starwood's 37-page proposed legislation, and I have also read the legal opinion on it. So as a public official, I consider myself well up to speed on Southfield. That's a little bit about my public service background, a little bit about my professional background. My professional background is in construction and property management. I'm a licensed master plumber and construction supervisor. I have held both of those licenses for over 20 years, and I began my career 25 years ago working for a company that developed condominiums and managed real estate. We did projects that ranged in size from 2 to 50 units, and the portfolio that we managed consisted of almost 200 apartments and some warehouse and office space as well. Eventually, I moved on. I started my own plumbing company, but when I did, I stayed active in real estate. Myself personally, I have built and sold condominiums. I have bought land, subdivided into lots, sold the lots. Over the past 15 years, I've done a variety of projects. I have bought distressed property, improved it, sold it, held on to some of it. I own and manage my own income property on the south shore, so I consider myself to have a good understanding of the local real estate market, which I believe is essential to the position. So in closing, I would just ask you gentlemen tonight, when you're casting your vote, to please consider my 10 years' experience as a public official, as a selectman, as an Old Colony Planning Council delegate, as a Water Commissioner, and as a Finance Committee member, and also my 25 years' experience as a licensed professional in construction and real estate. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. The first question, and this is an accumulation of questions from the board, "With approximately 12 percent of the land owned by Abbotton and Southfield, it has been described that the major impact to Abbotton residents will be the quality of life issues, increased traffic, et cetera, municipal service impacts as fire, water, et cetera. What do you see as the most significant impacts to Abbotton residents as Southfield gets built out, and how do you go about protecting the town's interest in minimizing these impacts?"
Well, you named the big ones. Traffic. Obviously, traffic is my obvious concern, but I don't think a fully-developed Southfield is going to impact Route 18 as much as people think, and I'll tell you why. In 2016, the state of Massachusetts is going to widen Route 18. They're scheduled to break ground sometime in 2016, and they don't have a completion date. It's going to be a multi-year project. It's going to take between two and five years. So basically, traffic is going to be a mess on Route 18, you know, from 2016 up until 2020. So, you know, but when it's finished, I believe the extra lane in each direction should minimize or mitigate altogether any impacts of a fully-developed Southfield. I do believe, because 18 is at the front door of Southfield, I do believe South Shore Tri-Town should have a seat at the table, the planning table, when time comes to formulate a plan to minimize the effects of traffic during, you know, during construction. There's going to be a time where the DPW, the DOT, Old Colony Planning Council, and all the politicians get together, South Shore Hospital, Public Safety, they're going to get together and come up with a plan as how to deal with this construction, and because it affects Southfield like it does, I think South Shore Tri-Town should have a seat at that table. But, and then water. Water, according to the existing legislation and the proposed legislation, they have to, the master developer has to secure and finance any water supply. Okay? So in the case of Abbotton, we can't sell any water that we don't have. Okay? I can tell you right now, as a Water Commissioner, we'll never have a water ban because of Southfield. We're not going to sell them any water that we don't have. So there's a couple of different scenarios we can talk about later, because I noticed you worked in water into a couple of questions, but there's not going to be any impact on Abbotton's water supply. Okay? And then the other one is schools. There shouldn't be any impact on schools, because there's not supposed to be any dwellings in the Abbotton portion. And the other one is fire. I see minimal impact. There shouldn't be any, much of any structural firefighting, because there'll be no structures in the Abbotton portion.
Okay. Thank you. Question number two, "As development at Southfield has been slowed and at this time stalled, what do you think is the biggest obstacle facing Southfield's future development, and what can Tri-Town Corporation do to overcome that obstacle? And what possible role do you see for the Abbotton-Rockland Joint Water Works?"
I do think Tri-Town has been unfairly blamed for some of the slow construction. I think the two biggest reasons for the slowdown in construction, number one is the real estate market isn't that great, and the second reason is there's been a lot of bad publicity. There's an aura of uncertainty around the whole development that has kept people away. My in-laws are a case in point. You know, my in-laws were interested in buying down there, they were looking, but they're reading all these articles in the newspaper, so they're in a wait-and-see mode. And a lot of this uncertainty came about when L&amp;R sold out to Starwood, and there was proposed changes, and so I, you know, that's not to say that Tri-Town can't do more to better their situation. It's my understanding that Tri-Town is coming up with their own legislation, okay, in the next couple of weeks. So now you're going to have the existing legislation, you're going to have Starwood's legislation, now you're going to have a new improved version of Tri-Town's legislation. I'm hoping that Tri-Town and Starwood can meet some, you know, find some common ground, come to an agreement, and start building and marketing and selling commercial and residential property, because they need the revenue. So, and then you worked in Abbotton-Rockland Joint Water Works. The role they play, I don't think we can produce the type of water they need. Okay? We have sent a request to the DEP to increase our withdrawal permit. Okay? We're not going to be able to give them what they need to make an impact over there. But there's another plan, if we have time to talk about it, that involves Abbotton-Rockland Water Works. That could be a big deal. We could actually save the day down there and provide water for the whole complex. If, you know.
Okay. And question number three, "Is there anything in Starwood's proposed legislation that you think will benefit development at Southfield? Do you believe that the Abbotton Board of Selectmen should take a vote in support or opposition to the proposed legislation by Starwood?"
Is there anything beneficial to the development of Southfield? One thing in the new legislation that I thought beneficial, which probably should have been in the original legislation, is adding Southfield residents to the Board of Directors. You know, I watched hours of those meetings in Weymouth online, and there was, you know, at least a dozen Southfield residents that came to the microphone to speak in favor of this new legislation, and they all said the same thing. They all said, "I love, we love Southfield, we love it here, but we don't feel represented." They feel underrepresented. So I think the new legislation does have, you know, they have been thoughtful enough to add two positions on the Board of Directors for Southfield residents, and I think that will, I think it will kind of take the heat off Tri-Town. It'll be, I think they'll feel included, and they'll feel represented, and I think it'll help kind of quell some of the animosity down there. And the other part of the question, "Do I think the Abbotton Board of Selectmen should take a vote in support or opposition of the proposed legislation by Starwood?" I don't think you should take a vote either way, because right now, we have a third version of legislation coming out, and there are all sorts of questions about Starwood's legislation that haven't been ironed out yet. Okay? We don't know about the bond debt. Okay? You can't, they can't, I don't think you should take a vote, because to vote to support the legislation would be voting to dump the bond debt onto somebody else. There's really not enough skin in the game for Abbotton to take a vote, I believe. There's also discrepancies in the new numbers. The Weymouth School Superintendent has come out and challenged Starwood's numbers, saying they don't add up the cost to educate Southfield kids. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that are being disputed, and until that stuff gets ironed out, I don't think you guys should take a vote.
Thank you, Chris.
That's it.
Yep. All set? Thank you very much. Joe? We have Joe Shay from Free Wyman Road.
Joe Shay, Free Wyman Road. Good evening. I'm applying for the Abbotton position for the Tri-Town Development Corporation. For those at home, Tri-Town Development Corporation, South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation, commonly referred to as Tri-Town, is the governing body for the redevelopment of former South Weymouth Naval Air Station and the overseer or the master developer. This was a structure created in the 1998 legislation that was developed by and supported by all three towns, Abbotton, Whitman, and Rockland. I'm applying for a position that was held and served by Jim Lavine since 1998 until his untimely death, and which he served so ably in. I would hope to try and follow his example. This position is an important position and appointment for the town of Abbotton, especially because major changes are being discussed on how the air-based redevelopment will be managed, what the roles and controls for the town will be, and there's major potential changes to the reuse plan. These changes could have tremendous impact on the town of Abbotton and its residents. It is critical the Board of Directors have the best leadership and membership during these changes and to control and monitor their impacts, potential impacts on the three towns involved, Abbotton, Rockland, Weymouth, and especially Abbotton. I believe I have the knowledge and experience in government, municipal government that is required as one of the qualifications. I was a selectman for 12 years, I was an elected assessor for six, and I served on the Finance Committee for three. I have served on many other committees in Abbotton, town governments such as open space, charter bylaws revision, and tricentennial. This experience has given me much knowledge of what the concerns, needs, and views are of the town of Abbotton and its residents. I believe my most valuable experience for the directors position, out of several Abbotton, Tri-Town, and state committees, I have served on dealing with the reuse and overseeing the development of the former South Weymouth Naval Air Station over the past 13 years, 23 years, I'm sorry. The first was the Abbotton, first was the Abbotton-South Weymouth Air Base reuse planning, which started really in 1975. I joined when I was a member of the Selectmen in 1990, and the committee was active until 2005. We would review what the recommendations were and make recommendations to Abbotton Town Government, such as a planning board, town meeting, Finance Committee on the Selectmen, on what should be done. We were especially active during initial reuse planning in 1995 to 1998, and the L&amp;R Plan Changes in 2005. When the airbase closed in 1995, or the closing was announced, I was appointed as a member of the Reuse Planning Committee, which developed the original master plan, the legislation, and the governing structure for the airbase, which then approved by all three towns in 1998 town meetings. When the L&amp;R developed a new plan, I was a member of the Citizens Advisory Council, Citizens Advisory Committee, which developed the environmental impact review. That gave me much knowledge on the environmental and transportation issues involving the base. I have been the Abbotton representative to advisory board since Jackie Lanis left in 2007 to current. I have also been the chairman of the committee since I joined. During this, I have pushed to try and make sure that we get more commercial development on the base, both for revenues for the town, but more importantly, for the permanent jobs that we need. I have also pushed to make sure that we have transportation issues addressed, including the need for MBTA services that were originally promised and the capacity of MBTA to play a major role in the transportation of people to or from the base. And I have also been deeply involved in the review of the highway plannings for Route 18. I've expressed my concerns on some of the issues there. I would, Chris has mentioned that the reconstruction 2016, 2020 will help. I still, looking at what I've seen in the plans, there still will be issues after that development, and the other question is always, is whether the traffic stays are correct in their judging of impact of what will happen. I believe this experience will make me a valuable member of the Board of Directors as Tri-Town and three towns impacted, address the change and challenges ahead. While I've been working on the airbase since 1990, I've tried to work cooperatively with other people to find, with the other towns, the other people involved, to find the best solutions possible, to realize that we can't always look for the perfect, but we have to protect the towns, we have to protect the sort of hometowns, but we also have to try re-solutions. In 1998, when we were developing the final plan, at the time, the legislature called me the great consensus seeker for the airbase planning. The redevelopment plan covers over 1,400 acres in three towns. It's by its very nature very complicated with many interrelated facets. It's important that the Board of Directors have the knowledge to help define what changes are needed and what proposed changes could create problems for the region, especially for the town of Abbotton. I believe I have this knowledge and experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. Once again, I'll read the questions. Question number one, "With approximately 12 percent of the land owned by Abbotton and Southfield, it has been described that the major impact to the Abbotton residents will be the quality of life issues, increased traffic, municipal service impacts, fire and water, et cetera. What do you see as the most significant impacts to Abbotton residents as Southfield gets built out, and how would you go about protecting the town's interest in minimizing these impacts?"
There are two other concerns that are not as primary, it's the quality of life and the impact on the services, but one is jobs. The original plan was to provide both construction jobs to redevelopment, more importantly, permanent jobs to replace the jobs that were lost when the airbase closed. And also, of course, funds, but Abbotton is limited on that, both because we only own 12 percent, and also because 50 percent of the 180 acres we own are wet. So what development will be in Abbotton is going to be limited. I think in the past, we have tried, and I know I have tried, to ensure that we monitor what has happened in the legislature, to what's happening to the plans, to monitor the progress of both Tri-Town and the master developer, to ensure things are going the way we think they should be going. I know in 2000, for example, in 2005, I played a major, I and a member of the Reuse Committee at Abbotton played a major role, working with the town planner, Dan Crane, and the planning board, to pressure L&amp;R to give revisions to what they were planning to do to protect us. We wanted early construction of the east-west parkway than they planned to limit the, to limit the impact on Route 18. We wanted an actual count for how many bedrooms were going to be constructed there. That was vague at the time. We won the traffic study. We were able to win on those three items by basically saying Abbotton would not, we would try to prevent Abbotton approving the plan unless that happened. I would continue to do those type of activities, and as a member of the Board of Directors, I've tried to do that as a member of the advisory board, to try and push on the issues that I think are concerns, for example, the slow commercial growth and the questions on transportation.
Thank you, Joe. Okay. Number two is, "Development at Southfield has been slow and at this time is stalled. What do you think is the biggest obstacle facing Southfield's future development, and what can Tri-Town Corporation do to overcome that obstacle? And what possible role do you see for the Abbotton-Rockland Joint Water Works?"
First, the questions are water. As Chris has indicated, we cannot, I don't think, we have to listen to whatever discussions. If somebody wants to get on approach of Joint Water Works, they have to listen. I would be very cautious on what we give. As Chris has indicated, we can't supply their whole needs and nowhere near it. I'm also concerned as to what our development will be in the town of Abbotton-Rockland over the next 20 years, and also what the climate changes could be. If we have, as forecasted, hotter weather, drier weather, what's that going to do to us? We don't have any water bans now, but we do have bans on people washing their cars and so forth. What could be the impact? I know the original plans, I was involved with the call for getting water from the MWRA or possibly the Brockton Desalination Plant. I think the needs are going to be fairly great. I know there's talk about providing it from Weymouth. I would just be very cautious on giving, you know, on the Abbotton-Rockland water. We have a limited amount. The other question would be that if we open up the water, Abbotton-Rockland water to Southfield, could we have other groups such as the City of Brockton looking also to say, "Well, if you have extra water, we could use some," especially in conjunction with sewer plants, sewer projects. There's several reasons for delays. One is that we've gone through several changes in the plan. The original plan for a mall had to be dropped because of construction issues and opposition from several residential groups. And we went to an office park, and then in 2005, when L&amp;R came in, we were pressured to move to a more heavily residential development than we had originally, and that was also being pressured by the Romney administration. So that has caused changes. The economy itself, the major problems from 2008, the Great Recession 2008, basically to some degree is still current. There were major changes in Congress on the Act on Land Transfer requiring, putting in more stringent requirements for transfer of land from the Navy to the Tri-Town. I think recently, the major issue I see is the master developer has not been pursuing commercial, and that goes back to L&amp;R, and they have not, and also they have stopped with Starwood, developing residential, saying, "We won't do anything until you agree to our changes." I think Tri-Town and the master developer and the towns need to work together, but I think at this moment, the biggest issue is with the master developer. If they don't want to pursue it, then there's nothing anybody else can do. And in any case, development at that base is going to be slow. There's many issues involved. If we change our plans up there, it involves the EPA again, it can involve the change to Navy Development Agreement for transfer of land, it can involve three towns. It is a big project in the change. It can be a lengthy process. I think to some degree, I think Starwood has underestimated some of that stuff, especially if they have to go back for environmental planning. That's a two-year process. Yep?
Thank you. Number three, "Is there anything in Starwood's proposed legislation that you think would benefit development at Southfield? Do you believe the Abbotton Board of Selectmen should take a vote in support or opposition to the proposed legislation by Starwood?"
I'd like the proposal to pressure on the Commonwealth to reduce the amount of money to Tri-Town and the financial restriction of Tri-Town as having to try and handle the east-west parkway. That is something that benefits the whole region. I like what they're saying on getting funding and pursuing the water source, however, regardless, I think the impact some people have had is just saying Starwood is going to pay for the water source, they would pay for development, but then the cost would be then given to either the users on the base or the three towns in some fashion. So that is something I think we need to keep in mind. I also, I do agree with Chris, I think we need to do some, we could do something with the Board of Directors on having representatives from Southfield and perhaps the state. I would not go with two. I mean, at present time, there's 500 residents on Southfield. If we gave them two votes, that would give them more than Abbotton, 17,000, the same number as Weymouth's, 57,000, the same number as, I think, Rockland has about 19,000. I wouldn't go, but I think the biggest concern I have, and I think I've expressed it here before, and I think it was echoed in the Abbotton Town Meeting vote of November, Starwood is not negotiating with us. Starwood has basically proposed a plan, they came here for one meeting. We expressed concerns. They haven't been back. They haven't talked to us. They've been meeting with Weymouth, but they haven't sent us any information on what they're proposing to do. They are, as I know, they are planning to go into the legislature in a short period of time and file a bill. I have problems with the whole attitude of, "We're going to do it, and if, you know, we're going into it, and we don't have to talk to you."
Why is Tri-Town, Tri-Town is illegal?
So, as Rick has pointed out, Tri-Town is established by law to represent the base, and they refuse to talk to Tri-Town, and they refuse to talk to the three towns together and negotiate with them. To me, that is unacceptable, and it's surely great changes for the future. I think we have to work with Starwood, we have to examine the changes, we have to define what can be done, but it's got to be a joint process and allow for local approval and retain local control. We could loosen up some of the scenes and require a joint, all three towns approval on some of the minor changes in the zoning plans and simplify the development process. I think we can do that. But I have concerns that Starwood, some of the stuff they have is inaccurate. As Chris mentioned, we just have a report by the Weymouth School Superintendent that Starwood's projections on the local aid and the cost of Weymouth schools, to quote, "deeply flawed." That doesn't indicate I express an opinion. They have reneged on some of the original commitments. The original commitments on, from 2005 on recreational facilities, they've said they're not going to do. They haven't gone into much detail what they're going to do in the planned, on revised plan, except to say, "At this point here, we're not going to do, we can't do commercial. Commercial's not feasible." Well, commercial drives revenues, commercial drives jobs. To me, that's a major problem. Main concerns have been raised on the Starwood legislation. Jim Wilson had a great deal of very valid comments over at Rockland a few months ago. Kevin Donovan has expressed concerns. I've seen this three and a half pages. Eric, the town accountant in Rockland has. I don't know who else has, but we're not hearing anything back. As far as I know, they're not talking to the two planning councils, Metropolitan Area Planning Council for Weymouth and Old Colony Planning Council for Abbotton and Rockland. The changes proposed by Tri-Town, many, and could have major unforeseen impacts without joint review and negotiation. You don't have to take a vote right now, but my thought would be, as soon as they get ready to file legislation, if they have not, if our concerns have not been addressed, you need to take a negative vote. It depends on a clear message to the legislature, "Do not approve this act," because without that, they could say that our silence implies consent to that plan. So you may not have to do it now, but as soon as you know they're going in, I think if it has not been changed, I think you need to do it at that moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Chris, nice to go. All right. I don't know if you gentlemen want a few minutes of thought, or you want to move ahead, accept nominations?
Read anything about Robert Toomey's, from Robert Toomey's, people are aware of his qualifications?
You know what? You want to read it?
To the Abbotton Board of Selectmen, from Robert Toomey. Gentlemen, per your request, I am supplying some of my work experience that you may consider to be relevant to the appointment. Research analyst, Office of Management and Budget, representative of the mayor's 24-hour emergency hotline, liaison of the city of Boston to promote Don Law's office, research assistant, Mayor's Office of Policy Management, assistant manager, Boston Management Program. Assistant, Mayor's Office of Policy Management, Assistant Manager, Boston Management Program, Boston Police Officer. Also appointed and elected Abington Sewer Commissioner, an elected trustee of the Abington Public Library, and a public school volunteer. Qualifications are brought submitted.
Thank you. Now, obviously, you have three candidates that have stepped up for a very important position for the town, there's no doubt about it. So I want to thank you guys. Now we have to make a decision, which isn't good.
Should get paid the big bucks for it.
I know, I know. It's just this part of it I don't like. So, at this point, I would accept a motion or nomination. Nomination, I guess, would go.
Is it a nomination or do you just vote?
Whatever way you want to do it, I guess you could just vote. Yeah, I'll go down the line if you want.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just wondering why, is there some...
No. I think the past...
Yeah. All right, Tom. Good idea, Tom.
Is it like you draw sticks here?
That's the problem.
I think that, for both candidates and Bob, who's not here, I think we've got a good slate of candidates, and knowing all, at some level, I would say personally, I know that they're committed to Abington and certainly to the best interest of the town. You know, one of my concerns is, you know, impact to services, and I clearly am concerned about the water, and I'm sort of surprised that our water commissioners would vote in favor to request an increase to our water withdrawal permit where I didn't see in, you know, in coupling with that, that we're increasing our supply. Just to me, I just, I've been living in this town for a while, it's a scarce resource, and I just know living here. We have water bans, so on and so forth, and I think Mr. Aiello, you know, couched that in the sense that any water that would be supplied to Southfield will never be enough. But it just, it just concerns me that, you know, that happens. However, in saying that, I think that, you know, both candidates, you know, hit the mark on some of the impacts. You know, I'm going to cast my vote for Joseph Shea, and again, there's some things he said that resonate with me. I do know, have known Joe for many years, and I do find him as a consensus-seeking individual. And I do like the idea that I think there needs to be caution here as opposed to let's put the full throttle ahead, because I do think there's other impacts to the town. And again, we only have 12% of the land, and as I think was stated, a lot of it is not buildable. And one of my concerns would be that if we go with a Starwood's plan, my understanding is both or all three towns would be responsible for their own zoning, planning, that to me may be detrimental for, you know, for the town. So I think Joe has shown the experience, so I'm going to cast my vote for Joe.
Thank you, Tom. Andy?
I'm going to cast my vote for Chris. I know both have great experience in municipal government, but I do like Chris's experience as far as private sector experience, which I think is sorely needed over at Southfield. The fact that he has been a licensed professional in construction and building for 25 years, I think will go a long way in hoping to get things moved over there at Southfield, local real estate market experience also. Those things are very important to me, and I think they're going to be important to the members of the board, and I think it's going to be also important in dealing with Starwood and trying to get that project moved forward. I do note in Starwood's proposed legislation, the legislation that exists now, one of the qualifications that the appointees should have, one of the qualifications, not necessarily all, but is municipal government experience. Starwood is actually proposing that that not be included in the new legislation. So that wouldn't be something that, if that legislation passed, that we would be looking for, is somebody with municipal government experience. It would be more private sector, planning, housing, real estate development, and I think Chris clearly fits that mold, so my vote would be for Chris.
Thank you. Sir?
I think that I'm going to also vote for Chris Aiello. I think both gentlemen were very forthcoming in their answers to the questions. They were kind of similar. I do have concerns about, as Tom said, about the water, but I also have some concerns about the audit that was, you know, 2011 audit, and it, a scathing audit, I guess you can call it, about the airbase. So I have concerns about those aspects about both the gentlemen, but I think the construction experience, the municipal experience would definitely help Chris do the job.
Thank you. A lot of what's said tonight was very informative to not just us, but the residents of this town, how deep it is, and I think Joe alluded to the fact of, you know, who's actually telling the truth in all these different proposals that are put forward. We don't, we don't know, we've got to get to the bottom of it. But I, along with my colleagues, I do believe that Chris, in my estimation, and I'm not going to lie about it, Chris is a friend of mine, but I don't think that should deny me the fact that I'm voting this way. I think his experience in the, in my discussions with him regarding the water, regarding sewer, and no, I mean, Joe Shea is obviously a very well-liked, talented individual, and has done a tremendous amount for this town. I'm not saying anything bad about Joe. It's tough to make this decision, very tough. But I agree with the municipal, the experience in building and the build-outs, and honestly, with my conversations with Chris, some of the connections he has and Braintree and Waymouth and stuff like that was, was something that, you know, I took into consideration. My vote is what I believe, and honestly, I'm saying this from my heart, is what is in the best interest of the town right now. And so my vote is going to be for Chris Aiello. So I guess that would go, unless there's any further comments. I'd like to thank all three gentlemen.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. It takes, takes a lot of courage and a lot of guts to come forward and do that. And the presentation was very nicely done by both gentlemen. And I hope, Joe, you stay on the advisory board. Thank you. I do.
You guys have an extra five minutes, okay? Could you talk about the water a little bit?
I'd prefer, you know, I think, I think, I know you have an issue with what was said, and I think it came out the wrong way. I'd prefer we didn't talk about that right now. I think we let it go. This has been a good meeting, we accomplished a lot, and I think that maybe, maybe you might want to talk to Tom about it. Could I recommend, though, that if you want to talk about it, that as a water commissioner, you come and be on the General Board of Selectmen meeting and talk about it?
If you guys, I have to resign from the water commission, as I'm going to resign in writing effectively, but anytime you want to meet with the accounting and the water commissioners, just ask. If you want to come again and keep up with the water situation.
That's probably something we should do.
Absolutely. And also...
It's a big concern everybody.
Well, it is in Waymouth also. Mike and I went to that meeting over in Waymouth.
We did. We did.
The Waymouth residents. That was the biggest concern of the Waymouth residents.
I think, Joe, you might have watched it on TV, but it was amazing, amazing how the different people, what the people from Starwood, what their concerns were, and the people from, the Waymouth people, their water and stuff like that, what their concerns were, and how we get to the bottom of it. But I think that'd be a great idea if we could at least to let the residents know, especially with Route 18 and the development of Route 18, which really is, I understand, is not, is not part of the Starwood. Starwood didn't create this problem. It was going to, Route 18 was going to be developed anyways, but it's going to be a big issue going, going down. I mean, they're taking land by eminent domain. I think they've already negotiated with that. I believe the only people in our town that have any say in it is the Conservation Commission. It's a state, state road, and they're going to handle it, but certainly our public safety officials are going to have a lot to say on how it gets developed, and so we're going to have to work together on it, so. Unless somebody has any other comments. Is that all right, Tom? I just...
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we have public comment. Any public comment? If not, I would accept the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good work tomorrow, Tom.
Yeah, thanks.